Six o'clock. Are you recording and ready?
Yes.
All right, welcome everybody to the September 11th meeting, regular meeting of the Seaside Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order and start with roll call.
Commissioner Wen. Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner La Micah.
Present.
Commissioner Owens. Commissioner Dodson.
Present.
Chair Silva.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Very much. All right, item number three is review of the agenda. Are there any items that have risen after our posting deadline that we would need to add tonight? Okay, so moving on point. Item number three, I, or sorry, item number four is public comment. This is for members of the public who would like to speak on an issue relating to the the jurisdiction of seaside, but an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If there's anybody who would like to speak, you can have three minutes at the podium. Please come forward and we'll give you that opportunity. All right, seeing that nobody is here, I'm going to take a moment and just I'd like to suggest that we have a moment of silence just to remember September 11th. This is a unfortunately a historic day. So if we can do that for a moment. All right, thank you. We'll move to item number five, which are business items. A architectural review application AR twenty four dash zero eight and variance application V dash twenty four zero one. Rolando Rodriguez applicant and Baltasar Garcia property owner owner request architectural review approved for proposed two story addition and a variance for reduced rear setback, side setback, floor area ratio and lot coverage for a substandard lot located at twelve forty one Palm Avenue in the single family residential zone RS twelve. Staff, floor is yours.
Good evening commissioners. Tonight we're going to be considering the first project, which is for both a variance and for architectural review. Have next slide, please. Now. So the purpose of this is to review both the variance and architectural review in accordance with the respective sections of the seaside municipal code. And then the project for sequel purposes in the environmental review is exempt both for the architectural review portion as related to the variance as the proposed two hundred and seventy seven square foot addition does not represent an increase of more than fifty percent of the existing twelve hundred square foot home. And then also the requested variances to some of the development standards do not result in changes to land use or density. Digging in a deep, a bit deeper to the purpose of the variance and when one may be granted, there's of course findings to be made. But it is specifically for when a waiver is being requested to standards when there are special circumstances that exist with the property. That includes both shape and size of the lot. And then for architectural review for single family, it's required for all second story additions. Just to familiarize ourselves with where this property is in the city twelve forty one Palm. As shown on the map is right off of Broadway Ave. East of San Lucas and on Palm Avenue, the businesses front Broadway Avenue from Paris Bakery to Preciosa Market. And there's also a child daycare, the early development services building a little bit to the right down and across the alley from the rear of the property. A little bit zoomed in perspective two shows you three of the four parcels that appear to be developed around the same time, all of them having carports in the front with the residential area setback significantly from the front property line. What's proposed is both a first and second story addition. The first floor they're adding a hundred and forty seven and a half square feet to accommodate a kitchen expansion. And on the second floor, expanding a bedroom by a hundred and twenty nine point six five square feet. Existing was already covered, but do you want to mention here that there is a existing nonconforming floor area ratio of point four eight, where it's typically point four five? And with this project, if approved, would have a total of fourteen hundred and seventy seven square feet with a attached two vehicle carport of three hundred and fifteen square feet. There's a site plan with Palm Ave to the left, the driveway and the two vehicle carport occupy the first forty feet of the property. And then the rear sixty is where the existing two story home exists. And then circled in red is the portion of the addition off of the rear, the alleyway is also depicted across seaside alleyway widths are sixteen feet. Going in a bit deeper to the specific variance request for this project and the findings. Three required findings. That there are special physical circumstances that exist, the granting of the variances do not represent special privileges being granted and that the project overall is consistent with the city's general plan. Looking at the parcel map and like I said before, those parcels that were developed around the same time, as well as the street view of the home, you can see what it looks like from the front. Just also illustrating the twenty five foot width and the hundred foot depth. Comparing that to what is the minimum required by the code and how it's smaller than that, the width required by the code is forty feet and thirty seven hundred and fifty square feet. So this definitely falls under what is considered standard and what those development standards were set out to be applicable for. The stable shows the existing conditions on the left column under existing in red are the existing nonconforming conditions. Middle column is what's proposed and then the far right column is the regulation of the municipal code. So we have three existing nonconforming conditions. One is that the west side setback is at four feet, four inches. They're proposing to continue that. We've seen that with other projects with the continuation of a nonconforming setback for second story additions and for first story additions as well. The floor area ratio is already stated exists at point four eight. They're proposing to go up to point five nine. The floor area itself at twelve hundred square feet existing and going up to fourteen seventy seven, where otherwise one thousand one hundred and twenty five square feet would be the maximum. And the lot coverage as exist conforms, but as proposed with the addition off of the rear would go up to a point six eight, where a point six five is typically allowed. This chart shows all the variances that we've processed since twenty twenty one. And the ones with the asterisks next to them were actually the same property that came forward with a completely changed scope of work. But what this illustrates is that the requests being made for this project on a similar type of parcel where it's well under what is required as a minimum lot size and parcel characteristics for that zone falls in line with what we've granted before on other projects. Calling out specifically the reduction in the rear yard setback from fifteen feet to nine feet, two inches. Previously, we have granted one reducing it from fifteen feet to nine feet. FAR has been increased at a maximum from a point five, four, five to a point six, seven. This is going from a point four eight to a point five, nine. And what sets this project apart from other ones and a primary reason for them not doing the addition off of the front where I said they have that forty feet of driveway plus the carport is that this project on this small of a parcel does have two covered parking spaces. Looking into the elevations, this is the rear elevation. So as seen from the alley. And this is the portion of the addition where the existing home height is well below code. Maximum is twenty four feet. Existing ridge is at twenty feet, ten inches. The portion of the addition that is being proposed goes down to twenty feet one. And then a dormer that pops out at about eighteen feet, four inches. So respecting the scale building in as if it was originally constructed at the time that the original permit was pulled. The rest elevation again with the rear to the right shows you that projection of the additional nine feet, eight inches off of the existing home. East elevation showing you the other side, which is mirrored. And going into specifically the findings that there are special circumstances that apply to this parcel and granting or applying strict application of the code standards would be depriving the property of the privileges of other homes in the area. As stated before, this parcel is smaller than the minimum. And then the goal is a small addition. Modest home at fourteen hundred and seventy seven square feet, a two bedroom home with a kitchen and living room on the ground floor and the goal to also retain the covered off street parking. Second finding is that the variance includes conditions of approval as necessary to ensure the adjustment granted does not constitute a grant of special privileges that are inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and within the same zone. Privileges aren't being granted beyond that, given the small parcel side size and the request for the variances to the side and rear setbacks, the floor area ratio and the lot coverage are typical for what we've seen for other variance requests. And architectural review is another layer that we have on top of this to not guarantee the special privileges where there is design input that can be had. Variants finding threes, that's consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plan, which there is not a specific plan. It does meet multiple goals that are outlined in the staff report and in the resolution regarding providing a variety of housing, especially affordable by design, meaning smaller homes on smaller parcels. And it does complement the existing land uses. And staff recommends the commission approve variance twenty four dash I one. If you want me to pause here for discussion on that, I can, or if you want me to go into the architectural review portion, I can continue.
I suggest you just go through the whole presentation.
Okay. Moving on to architectural review considerations are architectural design features, materials and relationships to other structures. Staking and flagging was completed by on August twentieth, which is well in advance of the hearing date, fourteen days in advance of the hearing date is what's required. On the left image that's taken from the alleyway with the circle kind of highlighting how you would see it, it also shows you the other homes and where they fall in line with respect to the rear setback, some of them observing it and some of them not. And then a closer up image of the staking and flagging that was done to represent the maximum ridge height. Again, the site plan with the addition off the rear showing the alleyway and that reduction to the rear setback at nine feet, two inches, but also doing the addition in a portion of the parcel where there is room to add again without affecting the parking requirements. This is the existing first floor plan. So from the carport, you can walk into the living room and there's a set of stairs that go up or you continue in past a utility room and bathroom into the kitchen. And the second floor plan, again, as stated before, two bedrooms on that second floor. Going into the proposed, what is circled is the area of the expansion. Again, enlarging that kitchen to provide more of a space for the homeowners to enjoy their time in their home. And then on the second floor, expanding that bedroom to just have two different sizes and definitely designate one more as a master bedroom. The materials and finishes are going to exactly match what's there in terms of both paint color with the better stone wash and harvest brown being painted to match asphalt shingles and white vinyl windows and doors being added. Again, the elevations, which I can quickly move through without much added detail, showing the rear portion of the addition. And as seen from both the east and west elevations and landing on staff's recommendation to approve the architectural review as well as the variance.
Thank you, Beth. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, if the owner or applicant or both would like to come forward, we'll give you up to five minutes to address the the commission. And then we might ask you to stick around for questions. It's possible.
Hello, everyone. My name is Baltasar Garcia. And I'm leaving the house twelve forty one Palm Avenue for twenty eight years. I worked for the city in Monorail Park Divisions for twenty years. The reason that we are here is like Beth said, we would like to spend our kitchen a couple more feeds because my wife have a dream for a big kitchen because she spent too much time and the kitchen cooking and, you know, spend time with a lot of recipes and everything, but our kitchen is so small. When we have a kind of family reunion, we have to feed a couple of people and then we have to move to come in other families to kind of have a dinner, breakfast or lunch. And our purpose is like, like I said before, we would like to spend our kitchen and at the same time they expand the room because that room is the same dimension to the kitchen. Barely fit a regular bed.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? I appreciate your presentation. If there's anyone else in the public who would like to comment on this item, we'll give you up to three minutes to do so. Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Frank Allofi. I'm his next door neighbor. I live at twelve forty five Palm Avenue. And I can attest the kitchens are small, the same house built, two houses built at the same time. So the kitchens are small. The bedrooms are small. You can't even get a twin bed in it. So I have no problem with his new addition. It doesn't affect me at all. So I just want to be here to let you know that I support him.
Thank you very much. Most of the time when people come forward, they're here to to complain, not to support. So we appreciate when somebody comes and supports their neighbor. That's very neighborly. All right, we'll close our public comments since there's nobody else here. Do we have any further discussion amongst the commissioners? No? Want to entertain a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve variance VAR twenty four oh one, subject to attachment one, the draft resolution and exhibit A. And that we approve architectural review AR twenty four oh eight, subject to the same attachment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See, you have a unanimous approval and no objections. We do need to say that an appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of the decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts. And the basis for the appeal, appeals are to be addressed to the council and shall be filed with the city clerk and appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fees. So congratulations on your approval. Hopefully there's no appeal for you. That concludes it for you guys. We're going to move on to the next item of business, which is five B. Enjoy your kitchen. Yes.
Thank you.
Make lots of yummy food. Item five B, use permit application UP twenty four dash zero eight, C Pacific Investments property owner and Betty Bay Su Fan applicant are requesting, I hope I didn't butcher that, are requesting use permit approval to combine a cannabis micro business with an existing cannabis retail business. DBA Seaside Green located at seventeen seventeen B Fremont Boulevard in the CRG Regional Commercial Zone District. The cannabis micro business will consist of retail, non volatile manufacturing and distributing within the interior of the existing commercial building. No changes will occur to the existing cab cannabis retail sales operation. The project is categorically exempt, class one, section fifteen three oh one from SEQA. Staff?
Thanks for that introduction. The purpose of this is for the commission to consider a use permit for cannabis micro business. And a little bit more detail on the SEQA exemption. It is specifically related to the exemption for interior tenant improvements and this project is not proposing any changes to the exterior or expansion in floor area of the existing operations. Looking into required findings of a use permit is that the proposed use is allowed within the zone. It is, but with the discretion of a use permit. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan and the design location, size and operating characteristics of the proposed activity are compatible with the existing and planned future land uses in the vicinity. Number four is that the site is physically suitable for the type density and intensity of the discretionary use being proposed, including access utilities and the absence of physical constraints. And the last finding, number five, is that granting the permit would not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience or welfare or material injurious to persons property or improvements in the vicinity and the zone district where the property is located. Seventeen seventeen Fremont across from Santa Fe Foods is probably the largest marker, but also can be accessed from the mall in the auto center off of Birch Avenue, which is where along the top left of the red circle box that represents an approximation of the property. You can also access the parking area. It is a dual tenant site with round table pizza on the left and those are the owners of the parcel who operate the round table and then seventeen seventeen B Fremont, which has been in operation as a cannabis retail, as one of the original permits that was issued, I believe in twenty eighteen. Going a bit deeper into the site description, it is a approximately just under fifty four thousand square foot parcel. It is a ten thousand square foot commercial tenant building. It does have three lease areas, the two on the main floor being the round table and the existing cannabis retail. And then the third being in a basement below, which is not part of this permit.
Can I ask a question real quick? The basement though, is it part of this business?
It's not leased to them currently. There was a time in the past where we considered a grow operation in the basement. That permit was never.
Okay. Yeah, I thought I remembered something. So, okay, perfect. I got it.
Right. It did not happen.
Okay.
So looking into a little bit of the details of what is a micro business. The state defines that and they require at least three of the following activities for a cannabis micro business license. Cultivation, distribution, manufacturing and retail. So three of those uses to qualify for that micro business license. And the proposal is for the continuation of the retail while adding distribution and manufacturing operations within the existing tenant space. This is the floor.
One quick question. I'm confused between the difference in the, in a cannabis operation between cultivation and manufacturing.
Manufacturing is the processing of grown buds or plant material. Cultivation is the growing of the plants. They will not. Correct. All right. This is the floor plan. The red line that kind of goes across and at a diagonal through the property shows you the path of travel from the front door of the business, which is accessed off of the parking area. There is not an entrance off of Fremont. Through the lobby, where you checking they verify your ID, age, and you proceed into the retail portion of the business, which is how it has always been laid out. And it's a huge tenant space and they had extra areas that were not being occupied. And in the attempt to do the micro business, putting some of the manufacturing and distribution uses into the rooms where you see the green circle indicated. So again, no expansion of floor area, which means no need to look into the parking of this use. And just showing how the two uses kind of integrate with each other. Going into the project description for those three components of the micro business. As stated before, they're going to continue the retail operations while utilizing the unused upstairs rooms for both distribution and manufacturing. Existing retail use is going to continue unchanged. And again, as shown on the floor plan, the distribution and manufacturing activities are all going to be in isolated rooms and not visible to the public view. Some details on the manufacturing and also these components were provided in an attachment as the project description that was given by the applicant, which goes into a bit more details as well as the security plan that you received, which was marked confidential. So it wasn't published, of course, to the public, shows the cameras, police reviewed that. Getting back into the project description for the manufacturing component. There's either going to be volatile, volatile or non volatile. This, in this case, a type six manufacturing license is what they're seeking from the state. It's going to be all non volatile. That means that they could be producing things like infusing cooking oils and butters. In this case, though, they're going to take raw materials, meaning the marijuana buds. And they're going to perform a mechanical extraction. So essentially through pressure to create extractions of resin or oils from that and then move on to packaging that into whatever goods they want to sell. And neither of those methods of extraction that they're proposing involve solvents or chemicals. And then to the distribution, this is going to allow for a couple of things. It's going to allow for them to receive the raw goods from cultivators to their property. It's also going to allow for them to go from the manufacturing rooms into creating that into products that they can sell onsite. So you could say in some ways, you know, cutting out quote unquote, the middleman. And that was the intent of the micro business license was to allow for that vertical integration versus having separate separated out with different business owners, all doing one component, merging those all together. And the cannabis products that they might make onsite, if they're in excess, they will also be able to load those in a vehicle and distribute those to anybody who's interested in buying them from them that also has a retail cannabis business. Looking into the use permit findings, we reviewed these at the beginning, but also just to briefly overview the support of those findings. And that the proposed use is allowed within the zone and complies with all other applicable provisions. Cannabis micro business is allowed within the regional commercial zoning district and the proposed use would comply with the requirements of the use permit, as well as the conditions of approval that have been added to the project. Finding number two, the proposed use is consistent with the general plan. And any applicable specific plan, in our new general plan, this area is designated as employment. There's a handful of goals and policies that are supportive of that. With one of them also being to maintain the auto center as critical economic engine for seaside as it has been for decades, but also allowing for the gradual transformation of the area. And although this is on the outside of the auto zone, that entire strip kind of down the middle and the roads that lead off of the auto center are all going to be, are all in the general plan designated as employment. And then moving on to finding three, that the design location, size and operating characteristics of the cannabis use are compatible with existing and proposed. Again, the proposed cannabis micro business is going to be within an existing commercial structure. The activities associated with the micro business are going to blend in with what's happening there in that area already, and also the fact that retail with what's happening there in that area already and also the fact that retail has been a permitted use here for a while with the city not receiving any complaints regarding those operations. Four, that the site is physically suitable for type, density and intensity of the discretionary use being proposed. Including access utilities and the absence of physical constraints. The site is served by existing utilities and infrastructure with adequate capacity to serve the project. And the proposed use of those extra rooms on that floor. Um, it is compatible with the existing retail use. And finding five, that granting the permit will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience or welfare or material injurious to persons, property or improvements in the vicinity and zone district where the property is located. The proposed use, again, within a existing commercial building where there's existing cannabis retail and that there's no way that staff sees that the activity is being added to the permit to constitute it as being a micro business from the state would have any impact on any of those elements outlined. And with that, staff recommends approval of use permit twenty-four dash oh eight.
Thank you, Beth. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have one. Um, in the proposal, do they identify what hours these these two new operations will be? Will they be operate at the same time that the retail is or will they be working extended hours into the night, things like that?
Same as the retail.
Okay.
Other commissioners? Nope, I don't either. All right, well. There's nobody in in the audience except for staff, but we'll go through the formality of giving the opportunity first for the applicant or applicant representative to come forward. Uh, if they wish to share, which they're not going to because there's nobody here, and then we'll offer the public the same opportunity. There is being nobody here. We'll go ahead and close that floor then for that, bring it back to the commission. Do we have any further discussion? No, we don't do um, they can't call in anymore. That we 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 broadcasted online, but they we don't give them opportunity to speak from remote access. So I think it's safe to say that that our public comment period is closed. Um, any questions uh or further discussion amongst staff or amongst um the commissioners?
Uh, sure.
If I think back, that was proposed to be a grow room only, and I think it was when the ownership structure was a little bit different, so things have changed.
The name has changed, correct?
Correct.
So that's related perhaps to the ownership change?
Possibly.
Okay. Um. All right, any further? Do we have a motion? Anybody?
I make a motion to approve use permit application UP twenty-four dash zero eight, C Pacific Investment Property Owner and Betty P, I'm not even trying to say the last name, applicant for a approval of combining a ca- um cannabis micro business with an existing cannabis retail business.
Uh, but yeah, uh, DBA Seaside Green located at seventeen seventeen B Fremont Boulevard
in the CRG zoning district.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we have a unanimous approval. Um, an appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of the decision. The appeal shall um uh state pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal, appeals are to be addressed to the council and shall be filed with the city clerk and appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fee. All right, congratulations to the applicant. Item number six, reports from commissioners. Do we have any?
No.
All right, uh, seven reports from staff.
Thank you very much. So uh, only thing I have to bring up is that we do have a meeting scheduled for September twenty-fifth. There is one item. Um, just as a little bit of a heads up, it is, the address is eighteen twenty Yosemite, which you might realize is pretty much directly across the street from the one that was just recently approved for a two-story addition. Um, and this one is even more of an impact on at least one of the individuals that was here speaking against the last one. So just as an FYI, um there there may maybe, you know, I don't try to predict these things, but there may be some uh feelings involved at the next meeting. So other than that, I don't have any updates. Uh, will all of you be able to attend on the twenty-fifth?
Um, I expect that I will.
I will, as far as I know. Now.
One, uh, since it was important uh recently for the owner to be here. Uh, I strongly encourage the owner of the applicant, the applicant to be here that night in case there's any discussion.
Right.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. We have a motion.
And thank you for the heads up.
Yeah. We have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.